Ladies and gentlemen, we back again TJ Quake, yo ghetto with pop culture talk and we bout to do some craziness once again ladies and gentlemen. I always bring into you the wildness that goes on in this dagum country and um and and some of the news that comes out, you know, like political news, pop culture, movies, you, you, you name it TJ and MJ spending your dollar, save your dollar movie reviews. We got some stuff coming at you with that new TV series Pennyworth, uh, season two. We gonna be talking about some stuff on there. Looking good so far. Looking good so far. I had my reservations all about it. I had my reservations, but we'll get into that on the, on that, on that show. Today, we gonna talk about what, what I've been actually saying for some time now that's gonna start actually, it's actually, it's, 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 it's starting from the ground and then it's gonna just rise to a level that you ain't gonna be able to stop it at. And that is the whole push on LGBT and gay and transgender and all that stuff in the schools. Being taught to children, putting it into their books, putting things like, you know, uh, pictures of other little boys missing another little boy sexually and they're doing all these sexual, it's showing sexual pictures. And these little, getting these little, uh, you know, schools, uh, you know, for children and they're putting that in their libraries and the little children are picking these books up and the teachers are pushing these books on the children. And that's a no-no with Christians, but you wanna know where, where it's a real no-no, real, real, real no-no is? Oh yeah, that's right. The one people that you guys keep forgetting about that are probably, you could actually say worse than Christians on this subject, Muslims. That's right. Muslims, because Muslims share something with Christians. They share that whole moral thing. You know, that thing about, um, a man shall, uh, shall not lie with another man as he would a woman? Yeah, that, that, that scripture that you see in the, in the Vidicus? Yeah, uh, yeah. Well, that's in the Quran too. Muhammad, uh, prohibits this shit and they, they speak very greatly on it. I've told you guys this in many other videos before where Muslims in, in, in the actual countries, right? Like, you know, Saudi Arabia, you know, Afghanistan, you know, Somalia, you know, places like that. They throw Muslims off of rooftops and then stone them to death. It's a sin. Not only is it a sin, it's against their law, which is punishable by death and everything. This is how they feel. This is how strongly they feel on it. Now, the Muslims that are here are a little bit more moderate and a little bit more tame on the situation, but, and they're only tame with it because okay, cool, this is America, this is the way laws are. We're gonna chill with their things, but we still have our religion, just like the Christians and everything, and we're, we, we're not for that. So don't be teaching that shit to our kids. It's cool for you to be gay. It's cool for you to be, you know, trans, whatever. Cool. Now, nobody has a problem with that. You wanna get married? Cool. All that stuff? Hey, no problem. Do you? That's what I always say and everything. The problem always lies when these people want to now push it on our children. Put it in our schools because they're trying to, they're trying to brainwash our kids into, into moving in that direction. So it's more acceptable, you know? So they grow up more accepting of that lifestyle and we're not for it. Most, most moderate, most, you know, Republican conservatives, we're not for that. Now, the progressives, yeah, they're all for it. Go hey, go progressive. Hey, it's all, it's all on board. We don't give a flip. Do whatever you want. Shoot, go out and steal stuff now. We don't care. Go and steal stuff up to $900. No problem. We'll put a slap on your hand and let you go back out on the street again, you know? That's where our liberals are at, our left wing flipnicks are and everything. The Democratic Party, shall I say, you know, they're, they're all for that stuff. We're not and so far, we've never been for it. We, we want law and order, you know? We want our schools to stay where it just teaches our children reading arithmetic, you know, uh, history, that kinda stuff. Science, real school stuff, stuff that they can bring into the world to get a job in, not your sexual preference. That doesn't need to be taught to children and everything. That's not gonna get you a job in the real world. That's your sexual preference. You don't have straight day at school and people teaching straightness in school. There's, there's not a subject for that and so forth. So why are you trying to do it with, with, with gays? It's, 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 it's not necessary, but they, they feel that they gotta push this on our children. So that they can, you know, get into our kids heads and freaking mode it to that way and then possibly turn them that way. Oh, you, you feel that you're, you're, you're a boy and you feel that you're a girl, right? Oh, okay. Well, let's go and make sure that we get your parents to make sure you go to a hospital, get hormones. So we can change that for you. Huh? Would that be nice? Little, little, little body? Uh huh. Yeah. I wanna be a dinosaur too. Okay. One thing at a time. But anyway, ladies and gentlemen, so that's what we're dealing with right now. We're dealing with the fact that these people wanna keep pressing and it's, and it's not the LGBTQ initially itself. Because that whole gay people and trans people think like this. They don't think that we, that you got them out now at boards saying, hey, don't they be pushing our, our, our lifestyle on these children? We, we don't want that and everything. So there's a lot of gay people and trans people that are not for this kinda shit, but we got these dagum elites out there that are for it because they think they're gonna get votes because of this. They think that this is the way to go because they always wanna make and separate us through dividing us through our sex or through our race and all this other stuff. That's what they do. So they make this an issue and they keep pushing it so that they can keep getting victims to come by, hey, we're here for you. Vote for us. And those guys over there, oh, those are evil. Those are guys right there. Those are, those are bad, bad, bad people and you better not vote for them or you don't get your freedom to be married. You don't get your freedom to be gay and trans and all this other stuff. No, that's never been the case. That's these fools lying to you, but now they're pushing it way too far. Because now, ya, 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 you thought you had it bad with Christians, but now you got the Christians and the Muslims tripping on this. And this right here at this school, here, why don't we just go ahead and check that out real quick? So you guys can see exactly what I'm talking about. We'll just go on in here and everything. And um, I'll let you guys see for yourself what the Muslim, the Muslim community is, is pissed off at, at the school board meeting. Yeah. They're not having it. Not at all. Let's do it.
They're more important and I'm the one that's gonna send a message to everybody. We are not gonna tolerate this. The school board to walk out.
Ladies and gentlemen, tho- those are Muslims in the, in the audience right there. Those are Muslims. Yeah. What, what are you guys gonna say about the Muslim community here? Okay. Hey, 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 left. You guys gonna go after them now? Are you gonna go after them? You gonna go to their mosques and tell them that they're, that they have to marry gays in, in their churches now? Are you, you, you gonna tell them to do that at their mosques? Yeah. I bet you you won't. I guarantee you ladies and gentlemen, that the left will not touch this with a 10-foot pole. They won't touch it. They're not going to. Why? Because see, they put themselves in a trick bag, a trick bag, but let's, let's, we'll get to that. Vote them out. Vote them out. They're not having it. They're not having it at all, ladies and gentlemen. Ah! That's right. I'm TJ Quake and I'm here to let you guys know that when I show you guys stuff, I, I show you this stuff because it's showing you the stuff that the left media will never show you. They probably ain't gonna show this on, on the left wing mainstream. Why? Because they're Muslims doing this and they can't go against the Muslims and everything because they've been for the last, I don't know, I mean, 10, 20, 30 years been trying to protect them. And say, you know, that you're racist if you're against the, you know, the, 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 uh, I'll say the extreme Islamic belief. Where the extreme side of it, these people are not extreme. They're moderate. They're, 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 they're not going against it. They just don't want the shit being taught to their kids. Because why? They're teaching their kids to grow up to be a man and a woman together, not a man and a man together or a woman and a woman together. That goes against our religious beliefs. That goes against God. That goes against Allah and everything. Okay? So Muhammad, all this stuff, they're not for that. Ask any Somali and go into their neighborhoods and ask them what they think about this. And I guarantee you, they will tell you some things that will make your ears bleed as you progressives will be like, ah, I can't hear this. Ah, I don't believe this. Yeah. Well, you, you guys never asked the Muslims what they think about this stuff. You never asked the Muslims what they think about trans and, and all this stuff. You know, you guys don't ever think about that stuff and everything. They're not for it. They are way more against it, even more so than Christians are. Christians don't, you know, for the majority of the flow, Christians, you know, don't believe in, you know, often off somebody because they sin against God. Uh, in their countries where they came from, it's that radical Somalia, you know, uh, they're, they're highly against it. It's punishable by death. And everything. You wanna, you, you don't believe me? Oh, well, let's go there real quick. So you guys can see what I'm talking about. See what I'm talking about. Because they don't believe in this stuff. They never have and they never will and so forth. Let's listen to what a, um, what a reporter says, uh, in, in visitation of Somalia.
Homosexuality is punishable by death in Somalia. Unfortunately, even though we live in a modern world, people still haven't accepted that not everyone has the same sexual orientation. There are some initiatives on the matter, but not enough. Homosexuality still faces stigmas around the world due to religion and the preconceptions that only a man and a woman can be in a relationship. In Somalia, homosexuality is punishable by death. It is a very extreme decision, but if a judge believes that imprisonment is not enough, he can sentence the defendant to death.
There you have it. He can sentence the defendant who is homosexual to death. That's not just in Somalia, ladies and gentlemen. That's in all these Middle Eastern countries. That are, you know, Pakistan, um, you know, Afghanistan, uh, Saudi Arabia, Iran, you, 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 you name it. These type of Muslim countries don't put up with it and so forth. So you guys always wanna try to say that the Muslims are, you never, I never hear him say shit about the Muslims though. It's always, it's only the Christians. It's white, white racist Christian people. They're the ones that are against it. Well, I don't hear you guys saying that about Muslims. This is what they truly believe. And if you ask them in private what they truly believe, they're not gonna tell you that they're for it. They're gonna say, ah, Allah ain't for that. He is against Muhammad. Sorry. I seen interviews with these guys, with, with different Muslims, Somalis. This one guy went into a Somali neighborhood. These guys dagum one dagum, um, uh, uh, the, the, the Muslim laws Sharia law back. You know what Sharia law is? They want that here, which we're all against obviously, cuz I ain't for Sharia and so forth. Cuz that, 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 you know, goes against women's rights and it goes against anybody, you know, the life of anybody, a, a gay person's rights to be who they wanna be or trans person or whatever. Cuz they wanna, they wanna eliminate them completely and everything. That's Sharia law and so forth. But you guys don't, you guys don't, you guys out there that are progressives, you guys don't never look at it like that. You guys don't ever look at that side of stuff. It's always only the Christian white man that you always call racist. What, then what is the Muslim then? Those people in that audience right there who are all saying vote these flipnicks out for putting these dagum LGBT things into their schools. That's what they're pissed off about. They don't want it there. Are you gonna call them homosexual, homophobes now? You gonna go to the Muslims and start saying that? Probably not. No, because you guys are cowards when it comes to that, you know, because they're supposed to be part of, the problem with the left is that they always want to, um, they wanna, uh, they, they wanna include everybody under this one flag. The problem is you can't include everybody on that one flag because guess what? Within your own party, there's gonna be divisions that are not gonna like what the other party's doing. These guys, you wanna get these guys to come in because of the, the, uh, supposable disadvantages to their life or race or whatever, but then these guys over here really are not accepting of these guys. That's even in LGBTQ and everything. There's a lot of gays. Actually, they're not really for the trans thing. They're not for it and everything. They don't want that being included with their, with their thing. That's like saying, well, you know, or it was, I think it's bisexual. It's not even trans. It's bisexual and everything. They don't believe that you could be, uh, you, you should be, you, you would wanna be with a woman and a man. They say it's either one or the other. A lot of them think that way. So when they see bisexuals in there, that makes them look like their thing is not real. Their, their thing is not, well, you, because it disproves the fact that they were born gay, you know? These people to them, they consider to be imposters that the fact that they wanna be with a man and they'll be with a woman. They don't like that. So they kinda bang heads there. Oh yes, people. So it's not all kumbaya within these organizations and so forth. And they love things that they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna excel with this. They're not. It's always gonna be some kinda division within the, within the groups that they're trying to put together. It's not gonna mesh very well because one side is not still not for this side really. And this side is kinda, well, we believe this, but we really don't believe in that. Oh, I mean, that's a little too far, you know? Now you guys wanna bring pettys in or you know what pettys are? The ones, the guys, uh, the, the men that want little boys and everything? Well, the LGBT don't want the pettys put into their LGBT. They don't want that in there. Why? Cuz it makes them look bad and everything. They say, hey, don't, don't include us with that. Why? Because now you got this grown man who wants a little boy and what does that say? Oh, well, obviously that's a gay thing and so forth. And the gay people are like, hey, that, you making that, you, you putting that on us now? Oh no, we ain't like that. We ain't about that. And so forth. No, no, don't put that in part of our, a part of our group and so forth, but that's what the, the left is doing. So they find some other, uh, group of people that will vote for them. Hey, we're for you petty guys. We're for you petty, pettys. You guys that like little boys and grown people want little kids. Yeah. We, we, we're for you guys. So vote for us. We'll put you over here with the LGBT guys and with the blacks and with the Hispanics and with anybody else that we feel, um, that, uh, is, uh, basically, um, oppressed. They're all oppressed and they all, they all have, uh, you know, conflicts with the, with, with the right. That's the problem. And we're gonna bring you guys under our umbrella. Yeah. And you guys can be one big family. And the other guys are like, hey, oh, wait, oh, wait, no, we, but we're not really with that. Hey, we're not really with that either, you know? That's what's happening. And so they're, they're doing this within their own progressive groups and so forth. So you, you can't please everybody. Everybody's gonna have their own ways and own beliefs, known likes and everything. We have our own religions and stuff like that. And when you, when you oppose on that with stuff like this, it gets people ticked off. Here's some more flavor for you. Check it out.
Parents are discussing this very issue in schools across the country. Parents came out to this Dearborn School Board meeting prepared. They have a printout that has excerpts from a book that talks about different themes, including how other gay people can meet people in their community and how to date. Now, they say those kinds of books have no place in their children's libraries.
There's a Edsel Ford sticker on here.
Stephanie Butler says her daughter checked this book out today at Edsel Ford High School. It's titled Flamer. It depicts sexually explicit acts between young boys, some with graphic descriptions.
You know, when you put something in a kid's mind, it makes them wanna do it more.
Look at, look at that. They, they got it blurred out, but this kid's butt naked in the picture actually and everything. And he, he's getting ready to try to go mess with another little boy and everything. And they wouldn't show all these little sexual things in these books to these children that shouldn't be seeing this stuff now. Whether it's heterosexual or homosexual, it shouldn't be seen. We're, we're not for it. I don't care if you're a freaking, uh, a guy who wanna be with a girl. I don't wanna see that being taught, being put into a book for my kids to see in school. No! That's, that's the point here, ladies and gentlemen. It's the sexual, uh, sexual, uh, indications and, and, and advancements that they're putting in these books. That we don't want our children to be having to see all this right now. I want a kid to be able to, you know, be able to be taught how to read and write and arithmetic and all those type of things. Those are the things that we take, we send our kids to the schools for, not for this craziness, not for some teacher to push trans this or, or gay this or throw gay flags up. We can't have the Bible in the school. We can't teach about God in the school. So why are we getting to teach about that? You know what I'm saying? Y'all don't allow that. Oh, cuz soon as we start bringing up God, you go, ay! Cuz you know, once we start bringing up God, it's like throwing holy water on a vampire. Everything. Yeah, it burns. They don't like it. That's Satan right there. He don't like God. So therefore you bring up God, you bring up the Bible, that, 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 that starts to do something to him. It starts to make them, uh, and get radical and crazy on your behind.
More or try it.
Butler has submitted complaints about six different books, some available in person and others through the school Sora app. Do you think there should be some literature that, that helps students who are navigating sexual identity or not?
Oh, absolutely. But if these were just LGBT, um, kid romance novels, that is totally appropriate, totally appropriate.
That's inappropriate either. I don't want my kid being read this book by a teacher thinking that it's, that it's okay. See, again, it goes against, the, the reason why Muslims, these Muslims and Christians are having a problem with this is that we raise our kids up to value God and what God's law is. Not man's law, God's law. So when man wants to go against God's law, we have to, eh, put the brakes on. Hey, no, 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 no. We're teaching our kid to grow up this way and everything and to, to, to be a, a, a child of God. And God's law is for a man to be with a woman, not a man to be with a man. It's against, it's against nature. It's against the laws of God's whole being. What he created is for, he created is to procreate. You can't procreate with a man and a man being together and a woman and a woman together because they can't do that. A woman can't impregnate another woman. A man cannot impregnate another man, which we're starting to have these stupid things in the, in, in, in Congress now. Where we actually literally are talking to guys who are supposed to be doctors up there telling, telling people, oh yeah, a man can get pregnant. Like what? And everything, but they, but every time we say, what are you, what are you talking about? Biological man or you talking about a, a, a woman who became a man? Cuz a woman who can became a man, I agree with you. That person can get pregnant. Why? Because it's biologically a woman. Has the woman stuff in there and everything. Men are not born with the woman stuff. We don't, we don't have ovaries. We don't have a, a, a womb. We don't have a place where a baby can grow in, in, inside of a womb and, and all that stuff. We, we, we don't lactate milk and everything when the baby's born and all that stuff. We don't, our breasts, none of that stuff happens. Only a woman does that happen with, ladies and gentlemen. Let's not get it twisted. It's been like that from the beginning of time, but we got these imbeciles who wanna twist things. That's Satan, ladies and gentlemen. That's Lucifer. Lucifer is the master of deception. He deludes your mind and he makes you turn away from God. That is what his purpose is. His purpose is everything against God and he's got man literally thinking that a, a woman can now be a man and a man can now be a woman. And you have to say so or you're gonna be persecuted because you don't think that's true. How dare you say that? When all my life, growing up, I've known the truth. Who are you to tell me? But that's what these fools wanna do and that's why they push this stuff in the schools cuz they're trying to delude your child's mind into warping it to think like they do. It's called Lucifer. It's called evil. That's all it is, ladies and gentlemen. I don't care. There's not a debate in this. You will never be able to debate a Muslim. When it comes to the religion, to the religious beliefs, you will never, they will die for that stuff. Shoot, dagum, some of these radical ones will put a bomb on their back just to prove the point. So you're not getting through to these, through the heads of a religious believing person and everything. You guys can be progressive all you want. Just don't push that shit on us and everything. We don't want it. I couldn't care less what you do within the bedroom with somebody else. You wanna be gay, you wanna be trans. Do you? I don't care. Have at it and so forth. But the minute you cross that line, the minute you decide, oh, well, we wanna start putting this in your, in your kids' schools and your, in their curriculum. We, we wanna start teaching this to your kids and if you try to stop us, we're gonna, we're gonna try to counsel you. But like hell, you will. I'll take my kid out of that dagum place. For, for most of these parents are, they're awfully patient cuz my kid would be out of the damn school. I'd take my kid out of this school and put them in a Christian school like that. 100% or they be homeschooled like a lot of kids are doing right now, being homeschooled because they're tired of this nonsense.
Where I draw the line is guides on teaching them how to actually do the act.
This book is Gay is one title in particular that really upset Butler. She even reported it to Dearborn Police. Paul Bruce, a former teacher with the district, says the book has educational value.
It answers so many questions I wish could have been answered for me as a.
Well, that's for you, buddy. So, so the, the questions that could have been answered for you, they should put that in, in a library somewhere, not a school library. Your parents could have gotten you that book. You could have went and researched that book on anywhere and found those type of books and they could have been, you know, taught to you and you've been able to read them and so forth. We, we're not trying to teach our kids to get their minds messed up and everything to start thinking, oh, well now I wanna be, no, no, no. The natural way in order that God provided us to, uh, to, to be able to, um, re-create, procreate is to have a man and a woman together. That, that's the purpose and everything. It defeats the purpose when a man and a man's together and a woman and a woman, cuz if that's the way God wanted it, he would have done that a long time ago. He would have done that from the get-go and everything. Animals procreate by being male and female. That's how it's done. It's just a, it's the nature of things. When you're going against the nature of things, then it's, it's looked at as, uh, not normal. It's not looked at as a normal thing. And the problem I think with the gay people and trans people are having with America and, and people like us is that we don't look at their lifestyle as natural and everything. And they want us to look at it as natural and so forth. I will never look at your lifestyle as natural. I will accept it. I will accept you being who you are. I will not judge you. I will not be mean to you. I will not be, you know, um, you know, uh, I guess homophobic toward you or whatever they, you guys wanna call it nowadays and so forth. And I, I, I've never had an issue with gay people. I only have an issue when they try to come up on you, try to be like, hey, nah, bro. I don't go that route. Respect and everything. No. It's so hard. You, 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 you do that over there, bro, and that's cool, but I don't wanna be in touch to my kid cuz I want my kid to grow up the way God wants the kid to be grown up. I want him to grow up in the natural way of things, not against the unnatural. Your lifestyle is the unnatural. I'm sorry to tell you that, but that's just the way it is. If you have a problem with it, talk to God about it. Don't get mad at us. Get mad at God. God is the one you're gonna be facing in the end, in the very end, ladies and gentlemen. That's who all these people are gonna have to deal with. They're gonna be dealing with God. They ain't gonna be dealing with me. They ain't gonna be dealing with Christians or Muslims or any other, other religion. They're gonna be dealing with the high almighty maker. And he's the one you're gonna have a problem that you're gonna have to deal with. And God's gonna be like, what did I tell you? And you did not let, you did not listen. Be gone from me. That's why it's gonna go down. Y'all, y'all think God's a joke, but when that day comes and when you on your deathbed, you gonna be begging God. Trust me and everything, because when that afterlife hits, you guys are gonna see a whole new world. It's gonna be a whole nother thing that people just don't think about. People don't be thinking about this stuff because they think they're gonna live forever. They think that, oh, it's not gonna happen to me. Okay. Sure, you're right.
As a child, my life would have been so much better.
The book covers topics like how to join dating apps and how to talk to people who identify as Christian or Muslim about your sexuality.
You have to be able to address those concerns. How do you stay safe?
Bruce hopes the district won't cave into pressure.
What do you mean, how do you stay safe? You, you stay safe by just keeping cool. In other words, if you don't go over there and start pushing your shit off on somebody else, you stay safe that way. That way, that person doesn't get like you, you know, get like, hey, yo, what, what are you doing? Well, where you going with this, man? Hey, can leave my child out of this. You can, you can do that. Teach that to your kids. But when it comes to my kid, I'm teaching my kid a different type of values, okay? A different moral state. I don't need you over here teaching my kid how to be like you. I, I don't need that. I'm teaching my kid how to be like me, straight and a Christian and so forth. And what you're doing is not again, is not Christian. So I'm, I'm sorry to tell you that, but it's not Christian and it's against God and so forth. So by all means, you wanna send your soul over there to the, to the dark land, by all means, do that. That's on you, bro and everything, but don't do, don't mess with mine. I'm trying to raise minds up a different way, the way God intended it to be and so forth. And that's, that's all it comes down to, ladies and gentlemen. We ain't got a problem with anybody who decides to be this or be that or do this or my pronoun is that and this. I don't give a flip. As long as you don't try to push me into your fantasy world, okay? Well, I, I go by they, them and their. Okay, that's great for you. I'm still gonna call you a she or I'm gonna call you a he. Because that's what you are. Don't be up here trying to tell me what I'm allowed to say just because it hurts your feelings. See, that's when we crossing that line. When you guys wanna step over on my side and tell me to do something that I'm not naturally, uh, inclined to do. I've been raised to understand that a man is a man and a woman's a woman. I will call him he, she, her, and that, and that's the way it is. A woman is a woman. A woman bears children. Men do not bear children. So that, that's my thing. Don't tell me that I have to now believe what you believe because now we're gonna have a problem. That's why I have issues with this stuff because they don't wanna just keep it to themselves. They wanna push it out on everybody else and that's where we're gonna have issues.
Picture from Butler and other upset parents.
What we are doing is we're evaluating the books that are in our inventory.
The district says they have more than 100,000 titles to go through. At a school board meeting, Dr. Ross Grover, a consultant for the district's curriculum, says seven books were temporarily pulled per the request of. At a school board meeting, Dr. Ross Grover, a consultant for the district's curriculum, says seven books were temporarily pulled per the request of parents.
We've also temporarily removed student access to all eBooks that are available through the SOAR app in the Wayne Consortium and the Dearborn Public Library Overdrive Collections.
Community members took turns speaking on the issue, some for the ban and others against.
No one has a right to censor for someone else except a parent for their child. As public officials, it's your.
There, there's the key, except for a parent. So when the parent says, I don't want this being taught to my kid, don't teach it to my kid. If their kids want to learn it and there's other parents over here saying, well, I want my parent kids to learn about, you know, LGBT and all that stuff and trans and all that. Cool. Let the parents teach their kid that. But because your kid's in the same classroom as my kid, why does my kid got to be subdued to this? Because this kid's now being told that he's allowed to, you know, hear about that stuff. I don't want my kid to know about that stuff. So I think it would be right then, if you're going to do that, then let my kid leave. Let my kid go on to the next class and everything. Okay. For you guys that don't want to listen to this subject, you guys can go and leave. How about do that and everything? And for the parents to say, we're cool with it, then let their kids do it. That way, when their kids grow up, they can be gay and they, and they won't have any children and everything. No grandchildren for them. The people that want grandchildren, they'll, they'll be the ones that'll get up and out of the class and move on. See, I want grandchildren. Okay? I want it naturally like the way it's always been and everything. I don't like this change and so forth. So let, let, allow us to have our, our families the way we've always had our families. And these people that want to be this way, cool. Let them do what they want to do. They'll soon find out how easily their generations will just die off and everything. They, they, they won't have a, 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 a next generation to be an offspring from their, from their family name because they're, they're not going to have any children. That, that's what that's going to have. I, I was just listening to just the other day and everything. Was it Blair, Blair White? Blair White had this one trans person on there. It was a dude who used to be, well, it was a, it's a woman now and used to be a dude. He got the whole nine, everything done, including bottom surgery. This person's on, on Blair White's show crying their eyes out because they cut off their shiz. They removed it. It has now caused them problems. They got scoliosis now because of it. They, uh, they got some other kind of disease that's, that's jacking them up because of it. I mean, all kinds of shits is happening to them and so forth. And they, they no longer have sensitivity. They can't, they can't have real, because it actually hurts them and so forth. It's, it's crazy. And this person's bawling their eyes out wishing, you know, the, the craziest thing of the whole thing that this person was saying? That person was saying, I wish that my family would have been there and told me not to do this.
You've had the surgery. What does it feel like to miss your penis?
I 100% feel like, uh, I was part of some cruel medical and social experiment. I wish somebody hugged me a few years back and be like, you know what? You can present feminine. You can wear heels, hair, whatever you want. But the sad reality, we don't have technology to make you an actual woman. But they kind of like didn't protect me from myself.
But nobody ever really told me not to and everything. No, 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 no. And then he goes off and says that his parents did try to tell him. That it, but you know, they, they, they were trying to say, well, it's not godly this and that and everything. But you know, they're kind of older and they live in another country. So they weren't always being around. And he rebuked them and he was like, ah. So in other words, it wouldn't have mattered how many people would have told you not to do it. You were going to do it anyway. It's a, cause you guys got a hard head. My mom used to always say, a hard head make a soft behind and so forth. And a lot of these kids, uh, they, they, they're, they're experimenting. We all go, we, we all go, all this shiz is just another fad. And you're finding out that all these, these people are going trans now are de-transitioning back to wanting to be what they were before. Because they're finding out that what they thought they wanted to be isn't really what they want to be. Now all their problems never really left. It only escalated. And now this guy is crying and whining because he cut his shiz off. He ain't got that no more and he misses it. And he doesn't have sexual flow anymore. He misses all that stuff and so forth. And it, it's, it's sad, but at the same time, I can't feel sorry for you, brah. Because you, you were told, you were warned and you didn't want to listen to nobody. And now you're boo hooing and crying about it and so forth. Oh, well, you did it to yourself, brah. I, I don't know what the hell you do. And then this is, but he's out there telling people, he, at least the one thing he's doing is he's going out there and he's telling people, hey, don't do what I did. Get more education on this stuff. Don't do this to children and so forth. Because when you're children, you don't know what the hell you want yet. And now he's grown up and he's finding out that this is not really what he wanted. That's all I'm saying, ladies and gentlemen. It's, it's a crazy world out there and Satan's out there 100% 24/7 trying to make sure that all of us go to hell. That's what he wants. That's his sole position. His sole position is to make sure you go to hell with him. Okay? He's, he, he, he got thrown out of heaven. So now that he doesn't got it anymore and so forth, he don't want you to have it either. And he's going to do everything he possibly can to the end of time and everything to make sure you go to the same place he's going. That's what he wants. He don't want you going to heaven. So he's going to make things look like they're nice and good and dandy when, like the Bible says, good will be turned to evil and evil will be turned to good. In other words, in today's society that we live in, all these things that these people are all fighting for are all things of Lucifer, the worldly things that are against God and so forth. And God's going to say, he promises. Don't think God's playing around. Read the Old Testament if you think God plays around. Read what God has done to people in the Old Testament and so forth. He's being cool right now. God's being real patient and so forth. But his time is going to be coming where the impatience is, is going to be gone. Remember Sodom and Gomorrah? God said, ah. Once Sodom and Gomorrah completely went corrupt, when it went completely, when Abraham could not find not one person in Sodom and Gomorrah that was not, you know, that was not totally completely gone insane with, with all this craziness. Cause Sodom and Gomorrah, which is what it was, uh, it was, it was sodomy. It was men wanting to be with men. Women wanting to be with women. You know, a man wanting to be like a woman and all this other stuff like that. It was full of all that stuff. That's why Sodom and Gomorrah was destroyed, ladies and gentlemen. Read the book. Read it. It's in the Bible. And Lot was told to leave Sodom and Gomorrah with his family because they were the only ones and so forth. Cause God said, I'm getting ready to eliminate this place. Sodom and Gomorrah is an example of what God is going to do in the end days. Because man is going to fall so deep into sin that there's going to be no way out of it anymore. We're already headed there already, ladies and gentlemen. Just look at how our morale, morality has become now. Look what's happening in our country. Look at just the, look at this stuff. Look at how they're trying to teach us to kids and stuff like, they're pushing this shiz all the way through there. God's not for it. And trust me, it, the time will be coming. It's coming soon, ladies and gentlemen. Mock my words and everything. So that's all I really wanted to get into. I was going to get into some of the stuff with the Muslim, uh, you know, other Muslim, Muslim history and stuff like that, with the Muslims truly believing this and, and their religion. But you guys get the point. My name is TJ Quake, your ghetto gamer. And that's all I gotta say on this subject, ladies and gentlemen. I'm out at 5,000. May the funk be with you. Peace.
Here we go. Uh, I'm TJ Quake, the ghetto gamer on this gaming thing. Going to bang them up, going to shoot them up, right here on gaming string. Bang, bang. Laser on up TJ Quake. We bustin' like the one, two, three. Here we go. Let's get into this, y'all. TJ Quake, the ghetto gaming show.